Evening, everyone. It's Thursday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. This is our first meeting after the elections. And, you know, with that said, we we need to kind of call a meeting to order, like do that at five thirty-nine. The first order of business, everyone, is to make a nomination for the chairperson of the Mount Vernon School Board. So if there's any nominations from the board.
I'll nominate Pete.
Do we get a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion on the nomination of Pete Eckoff? Yeah.
I'm willing.
You want, are you, are you willing still? All right. Any discussion on Pete? Serving as the chairperson. All right, all those in favor?
Yeah.
There you are, four zero. Thank you for the very yes. Thank you, Pete. And the meeting is in your hands.
Next up, I will make a note also for the record for today that Mr. Torres cannot be here tonight. So we are four strong. We just swore in Mr. Stokenger and Mr., I'm sorry, I think you forgot your name.
Amber.
Amber. To our board, and we thank them both for their service. And at this point, we will take nominations for the position of vice chair. I will nominate Jess Hinkley to be vice chair if she is so willing.
I am willing.
I will second.
You have a motion and a second for Jess. Any discussions? Be vice chair of the board? Take a vote. All those in favor of Jess Hinkley being vice chair passes four nothing. Thank you, Jess.
It seems keeping score. It's legit around here. It's like I didn't need, I didn't need Tiger. We don't mess around, I know.
Chris seems like done.
We are legit. We're legit.
Uh, our next position is for secretary.
Do we have like a little new board members?
Yeah.
That entail?
I actually don't even know what secretary is. I don't. Mr. Torres served as secretary last year.
So really, the only thing that you do is keep track of notes during our non-public? Anything else to add? That's pretty much it.
Pretty much. There's a process that, you know, we can ensure that we have.
There's a template. Yeah.
It's low impact. I nominate George to continue.
Can you do that if he's not here?
Yeah.
He would, he will.
Do that.
And you can always make a change. Okay.
I will second that motion for Mr. Torres to continue as secretary. Any discussion? All those in favor of George Torres to be secretary? He is so elected. For nothing. Policy committee. And I'm going to scroll down here. See who we get on policy.
We have Jess and Sarah previously.
Okay, so we need two people. Thank you. We need two people for our policy committee. I've never been on it, but it's it is a really important committee, not only for our board and our district, but also for the SAU. It it is a heavier time commitment. It's very, in my opinion, very detail oriented and as Sarah would say, you kind of need to have a passion for it. So having said that, I will refer to Miss Hinkley for any other commentary or insight to the to the role.
Yeah, I mean, it is definitely probably one of the more time-consuming committees because we do meet pretty frequently and review a lot of committees. That being said, it's really interesting. It's generally a pretty good crew.
It's multi-timer.
What's that?
Multi.
Yes, it's all right, right. It's all three.
Typically mornings.
Times of morning, yes, yeah. I'll do it again. I I enjoy it. I've been on it the entire six years, so I'll do it again.
So let's do one at a time here. So I'll make a motion of Miss Hinkley continuing to serve as our policy committee member number one. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Jess Hinkley as policy committee?
Not that only committee member. I have other people to work with. I'm not the committee, but myself. I doubt.
I'm just asking, so I don't believe, is that something that you would be interested in?
We can zoom.
Yeah. I'm interested.
Right.
Okay. I'll make a motion to have leave Amber be the second policy committee member for the Mount Vernon School Board. Do I get a second from anybody?
No, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes and elected at four nothing. Thank you, Leaf.
It's at the brick school, but you can zoom. We do have some members that zoom in if that's easier also.
Yeah, I might have to zoom in, but it depends on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, great. Uh, the next position that we need is for the signing of the of the manifest. Make the main board members vote. Okay, so we need two people plus a third is what.
So what we'd like to do is have two assigned and then have all the other board members be alternates, just in case. Because if, you know, folks are away on vacation, we hold checks until the manifest is signed.
Okay.
So it's definitely something where we need a relatively quick response. The manifests go out on Thursday and we hold the AP checks until it's signed. So typically by the following, like Monday or Tuesday, we want to make sure.
So I know that I was one last year, and I think I did pretty good last year.
You did great.
A lot better than that previously.
You did great.
So.
Yeah.
I'm I'm fine with doing it again as one of the two, and I'll take any commentary or or if anybody else is interested. It's electronic. It's it is really easy. You can learn a lot if you skim down through the elements of the of the payments that are being made. Kind of gives you a snapshot of what the expenses are for the for the school, what we're paying. So it's a good learning curve.
Yeah, you can do it on your phone, too.
Okay. I've not done that.
It is a good one because you can see like all the every signature, every check that goes out, what it's for, the PO does with it.
I'd be willing to do that as the.
Any sign of nominations?
I'll nominate Andrew.
You want to do separate?
Oh, I'll nominate Pete and Andrew.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, second, I missed Amber. And any discussion? All those in favor? Andrew Stokenger.
So I'll add that we have, we actually have a training that we've developed for manifest signing, so you understand things that you're looking for, how to ask questions, and that is scheduled, I believe, with May ninth. So I'll send out an invite. You can, it can be in person and Zoom. And we'll go through the process of really our life cycle of accounts payable and payroll and and then different ways that you can ask us questions if you have any questions on anything.
Okay. And how long a term is that? Okay. If we could designate the remaining board members as alternate signers of the manifest. And we just do that, or do you need a vote?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, like it's, we like.
Yeah.
And I'll make a motion that the remaining board members are are made alternates to sign the manifest in case we need one of us, Andrew, myself, are not available. I'm sorry. All those in favor? Passes for nothing. And again, just send that out. Yeah, I'll send that out. I'll get on, I'll get on and refresh.
So, yeah, no, that'd be great. Thank you. And we're, until we do the training, I sent out an email to board members if they would remain as manifest signers until we do the training.
Yeah.
And and Jess and Pete, we're fine with it.
Yes.
Our next one is the SAU Budget Committee Representative. And that was Mr. Torres again last year. I I will nominate Mr., unless we have somebody here that wants to be on that. I will nominate Mr. Torres to continue in his role as the representative to the SAU Budget Board.
Do you want me just to explain what that is for? So all of the school districts have a separate budget committee. That's an advisory committee and including the SAU budget. So that committee is made up of a member from each of the school district budget committees. So the Mount Vernon Budget Committee, the Amherst Way of the Means, and the Sokeen Advisory Finance Committee. It also has members of the communities, both from Mount Vernon and and Amherst. And then board members are assigned as non-voting members to the committee to attend the meetings. There are three budget committee meetings typically for the SAU budget. And then the SAU board meetings that you're obviously will be at as well, so.
And again, good, it's a good learning experience to kind of get your fingers into the the background.
Yeah.
So I will nominate Mr. Torres.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Mr. Torres. And again, with the note that we can reassign if needed based on.
Yeah.
School Budget Committee. I believe that was me last year.
Yeah. And that was, that's the liaison to the Mount Vernon Budget Committee.
Oh, that's, okay, that's the.
Yeah, so the other was the SAU Budget Committee and the your budget.
I should say so. District.
Yeah.
Right, well, there's a, I'm showing town budget and school budget.
Yeah, I'm just putting it in district.
Yeah. The Mount Vernon School District.
There you go.
Budget Committee.
So. And that was one person?
Yeah, it's usually one. You could have an alternative if you want. Is that the one that meets with the select board?
No, your advisory, oh, to our budget. Right, okay.
Which we're gonna share.
Yeah, that's good. And there, yeah, I know, with people who are letting you continue, that's great.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah.
That's great. Um, I don't mind doing that again if everybody is in favor of that. Yeah, it's good learning.
And you you could have an alternative if you want. Some of the other boards do do that, just because it is often, yeah, and it's important to have a board member there, so.
Be a motion.
Okay, so Andrew, could you make a motion nomination for myself and Jess?
Sure, I'll make a motion to nominate Peter as primary.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Passes for nothing. Town budget, and that is rep to the town Mount Vernon budget.
To the select board.
Sure, I will, I'm we willing to vote for that. Okay, I will make a motion then for Mr. Stokenger to be our school board rep to the town budget committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, I'm Miss Hinkley. All those in favor? Discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Stokenger being our town budget committee representative? Thank you, Andrew. PTA?
I'll do that again.
I'll nominate Jess Hinkley to be our school board rep to the PTA.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? You didn't have the backspace.
I know.
Not sure on the next one or what's entailed, so I'll defer to my friends on the right here, transportation. Last year, we didn't, I'm not showing anybody.
Yeah, it's only if needed to be part of the the policy.
I think we changed the policy, too. Remember, we were supposed to go to board and we said BA to stop the question.
Maybe we did.
Remember that?
Oh, we did.
So I think.
I can't remember. If there's an appeal, I feel like there's a committee.
I think we should, this might not be aligned with the current policy anymore.
Yeah, we should probably not get it maybe.
Yeah, I'm gonna move it all the way to the bottom. Yeah, I'm gonna move it to the bottom of our list and we'll check.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, it's that simple.
Yeah, I don't remember those specifics, but we did talk about it.
Same you.
Oh, yeah.
Our next idea is the New Hampshire School Board Association, and again, I'll defer to Mr. Barry and Mr. Chamberlain, whether we had a rep and or if it was me.
I think so.
I didn't. It's not a very active one. We should select a.
You can go if you want to go vote.
Delegation.
Yeah.
The delegates.
Traditionally, the chair or?
Typically.
Which is why it would have been you last year.
But the board would vote for you to go to the delegate assembly and advocate for whatever, more funding, something like that.
Well, depending on what the resolutions are, yeah, right.
Do you want to nominate?
I'll nominate Pete. And then just BA.
All those in favor?
I went one year. It was actually really interesting. Weird long day, but it was.
The next is the board representatives for the Mount Vernon Educational Association for contract negotiations. This is a contract year, so
You and me.
Really important. I was on the last, four years ago, I was on it. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, just with history, since you and I have been around, I guess maybe it would make most sense. I don't know. Does anyone have an opinion?
I'm interested in being involved in that.
It is time consuming for everyone. It's like I was saying, I mean, coming meetings.
It's probably, it's it's each other's week, starting when in like September usually, Steve, is that when we started?
Yeah, we would have a calendaring session before we leave this year and start building calendars.
Yeah.
And typically, the board, we would do a retreat in the summer. Talk about board interest and items for the interested negotiations. As we prepare for negotiations and we calendar, and I don't know actually, Amy, this is Pete, this is an after-school or evening negotiations in Mount Vernon.
We usually start later afternoon, like four, it four or five-ish.
Yeah.
Um, typically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's here and if it's a forum, I could do it all. And I believe we did all of them remotely on Zoom last time because we were COVID, so we didn't have, there were no face-to-face negotiations.
And you know, when I remember I met with the team pre-meeting, just as a board and admin team, and I think it was on Zoom.
Yeah, it was kind of weird because we, you know, go, we'd go dark and they'd go.
Yeah, and be like, where can you go? Yes, and you would be in like breakout rooms.
Yeah, so that was all Zoom, all Zoom-led, so. Good. Do you want to do it?
I mean, it doesn't matter. I was just thinking because we both have some history here that it would make sense, but it it doesn't matter either way, I guess.
Just having three clock you can't.
Yeah.
You can't have a corner of the board. You have to post every meeting.
Yeah, and the board is involved, you know, the board talks about, you know, right, you know, has a a meeting to talk about.
We should do a retreat.
Yeah.
Retreat.
So, you know, the whole board is involved. It's just who's sitting at the table with the association is your, what you're determining now for your reps.
Doesn't matter. I mean, if Andrew is really passionate about it, that's fine.
I mean, I manage people for for work, so it's just another experience I'd like to have.
Yeah.
Leaf, thoughts?
Yeah.
So we need nominations.
So, yeah, I nominate Stokenger.
Let's do, I think we should do one at a time, so.
Yeah, that's one good.
So we have a second for Andrew?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Okay, Andrew Stokenger is nominated, Peter?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And I just, I'll make the comment that we will, you will be engaged, Leaf and Jess and George, it will not be, because I you'll be engaged. So what are we up to here?
Um, RSCC, we think that's probably not needed because it usually is determined at the SAU board rotates.
What is that?
It's the, I'm just gonna, where the consortium?
Um, regional, um, educational.
Services or some regional services.
Yeah.
Educational consortium.
Yeah.
Okay.
Our section.
So Amherst has done it. It's been an Amherst rep the last couple of years, so now it's time for, you know, we can look at the rotation.
Yeah, but that will be determined at the SAU board.
That's an SAU, we rotate through the SAU.
Um, and then the last one I see is, I'm gonna postpone the the committee.
Right.
But, um.
Building.
Building committee.
Yeah, two of those, great.
Two rep. Oh, I'll nominate Mr. Torres since he's not here, not to layer on him, but I think he'd be good and engaged and would level out into the assignment. So I'll nominate George Torres for the first member of the building committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? So Mr. Torres is our first building committee. And.
I was on that last year.
And you want to continue?
Yeah.
Okay. I will nominate Mr. Stokenger for the second position of building committee representation. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. That's it for my assignments.
We should.
I gotta go.
Thank you.
I gotta go deliver some babies.
Good luck, Jess.
Okay, thanks. Yep, maybe, we'll see.
I like your chances.
Yeah, probably pretty good.
I have too many boring nights.
No, not many, no. Right, good night, everyone. Thanks, John. I'm gonna take some of mine.
Take care.
Bye. Bye.
You gotta be really aligned. Get anything passed now, right? Well, it takes two. What, because there's only three of us?
Yeah, the majority of the quorum, we got four, so it's room in, so two can do it.
Yeah.
We at six o'clock, kind of on schedule.
Yeah.
Which is full. Time for us to receive the audit presentation. So I'll defer first to Miss Bacy for introduction.
Yeah, thank you. So, um, so we have Matt from Bashan Kuke, who was, this is their second year doing our audit. We've had a three-year contract with his firm, and we started the process in September, I think, with a field audit and then lots of work back and forth over over the ensuing months. And he's here to make a presentation to the board, just sort of a high-level overview, some, you know, some specifics on a few things and and then answer questions. So thank you for having that.
Hey, I'm Matt DiBarrio, I'm junior shareholder of the company. Promoted to shareholder partner in July of this year. Most important thing to the board, to the public, is the opinion on the district's financial statements. And happy to say that the district has an unmodified opinion on its financial statements, which means that there's no material new statements within the financial statements themselves, as well as all the required disclosures for the financial statements are in the notes. So this, one of the things I'll touch on very quickly is if you open the financial statements in front of you and you take a look at the statement of net position, which is Exhibit A. Very quick overview of it is you'll see that it looks that the district has a deficit net position. This is caused by GASB pronouncements, mostly GAT statement sixty-eight and seventy-five, which require the district to report its proportionate share of the New Hampshire Retirement System's unfunded pension OEB liabilities. And those can actually be found just above the net position, and you'll see that the OEB liability was about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and the net pension liability was about three point three million dollars. So the district looks like it has an overall deficit of about two million. It's largely driven by the New Hampshire Retirement System and the unfunded liability. Doesn't mean the district's in a poor financial position. So GAT requirements for it tends to be reported there. As far as what's more important to the board and to the public is the district's fund financial statements. So if you go to Exhibit C, which is page three of financial statements, this is this excludes everything that's long-term in nature, which that's what the statement of net position has to, so the statement of net position has got compensated absence of liabilities, everything related to capital assets. Whereas the fund-based financial statements here focus on everything that's short-term in nature. And you see the the general fund has an overall fund balance of about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Now, one of the things that's important to note with this is our GAT reporting requirement is the district's capital reserve funds. They're funded through raising taxation, so the way that GAT has been set is that doesn't have its own designated designated revenue source, so it gets combined with the general fund for financial reporting purposes. And wanted to know with a breakdown of what is actually the general fund versus what the capital reserves. I believe that it is note eight in the notes of the financial statements in page twenty-three and twenty-four, and I apologize, the fund balance components is split between two pages because of the layout of it. Roughly a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of the district's four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is attributable to the capital reserves. Every year, there's certain criteria that gets evaluated to determine whether or not a fund is considered for GAT standards a major fund or not for the current year. Because of the level of activity in the balances, the food service and the grants funds are major funds. And I believe that probably towards the future, the food service fund, you may not see that presented on the base. It's going to be combined in part of what is referred to as the aggregate remaining funds, which it'll be combined, it'll be non-major governmental funds. And then, so it's important, new standards that came into play for the district in the current year. We went through and evaluated, and it didn't have a material impact, and we discussed it with management at the SAU office. So GAT had a new standard this year, David ninety-six, which is called subscription-based information technology arrangements. It's basically, if you have a long-term agreement to use somebody else's software and and or their hardware, you have to recognize the liability for the present value of your future payments. We went through, evaluated what the district had, and nothing was material. So we asked management and said, no, it doesn't materially mistake the financial statements by not including this. Do you want to, you know, waive including it and putting in all the required disclosures? And the ultimate decision was yes. So there are very minor subscription-based information technology arrangements, but they are not material to the district's financial statements. And this is something that really the GAT board, we go to an annual presentation every year for the New Hampshire Government Finance Officers Association, and they have an individual from GAT come and preach whether or not it's material and doesn't materially mistake the financial statements. And if it does not, then discuss it with those, you know, with management and make the determination of, do you want it in there or not? Because they are the district's financial statements. They are not our financial statements. So that was one of them. And then the other one was public-private partnerships, which is more likely than not never going to be applicable to a school district. I believe for FY twenty-four, one of the new standards coming into play is GAT revised its stance on compensated absences, so. So they've gone from the view of only upon termination to, does it actually exist or not at the end of the year? So there may be changes to the district's financial statement numbers in the subsequent year where we may have to restate because of implementation of a standard that GAFB said is important enough that they felt that it required revision. Um, I believe that the compensated absence standard has been the same since. Before I even started with the company, which was in two thousand and seven. So they like to revisit stuff, you know, every ten to fifteen years. And it ultimately makes potentially our life a little bit more difficult, uh, because then it's communicating to the S A U offices, you've given us this in the past, things have now changed. So we need to find some way to modify to come up with what's the best way to present the information.
Is that, is, is that a sick day by now? Is that what a compensated absence is?
So, eh, a compensated absences would be, right, any, any vacation or sick time that upon separation of termination of employment is paid to that individual. Um, that used to be the stance of GAFB. That's not the, the stance that it's going to be anymore. It's basically, if it's accumulated, it's a compensated absence's liability. Doesn't matter whether or not it gets paid out.
Yeah, so, so we have to account for, because there's an accrue, I have an accrual of time already, but they don't pay down until I leave, but it's a liability in the books.
Right, and it's only, so I was like, the, the, the good part of it is, it's nothing that affects the fund-based financial statements and that's mainly the, the records maintained at the S A U office. That I'm sure that you guys see monthly financial statements, you know, statement of expenditures and revenues and what the actual balance sheet looks like. You won't see any of that stuff in those records. It's everything related to financial statement presentation. And so that's why people are saying the statement of net position and the government, uh, government-wide financial statements, that's where everything is gonna come into play.
So it's like the retirement debt, same thing.
Yes, exactly.
So it doesn't affect anything, it just has to appear on the books.
Yep.
New Hampshire only law? No, that's in, in this.
That's, it's all based off of any sort of personnel policy, union agreements, things like that. So.
The reporting, the change in the reporting is national.
Yeah, yeah. So anybody who, anybody, any government who follows the GAFB pronouncements and issues accrual basis financial statements. Um, otherwise you'd have a, a, a departure from GAAP. Um, and you'd see that in your, in your opinion of financial statements.
So would not apply in Massachusetts further. Cause you already have to pay out for all of them. So there is none that don't get paid out in Massachusetts.
Okay, so yeah, in Massachusetts, they're probably already all on the books in the financial state.
Yes.
Um, versus whether or not the time accrues but doesn't get paid out, that's no longer the, the stance that GAFB has.
Yep.
Um, the, the one thing we had talked about a little bit earlier with the S A U, um, staff was one of the things that we saw during the current year, um, so we do grant compliance testing. And through the compliance testing, with the S R grants, um, it has certain compliance requirements that aren't necessarily applicable to what school districts would normally have for grants. And because of that, there was a small little area of complexity, um. It related to work done by a, so H V company.
Yeah.
Um, so because of the district using the S R grant for certain building improvements, the compliance requirement, uh, related to prevailing wages kicked into the, um, to the actual compliance requirements we had to test. And through doing that, we obtained the contract from the con, uh, from the vendor. And everything was in the contract that described the prevailing wage rates that needed to be paid, things like that. Part of it is the contractor, when they submitted for request for payment, they're actually supposed to submit something that says that they certified that they paid the prevailing wage in the period covered by that. Um, so we actually went back and forth with the S A U office on this and ultimately said, it really should be there. Make sure that, you know, you actually get those in, in the future going forward. In the event that you do use any, um, S R funds related to this. And basically have something in our work paper saying that it's been communicated, they've signed, acknowledged to us. And because of the fact that it was in the actual contract with the vendor, we felt that communicating it to management themselves was sufficient enough, but figured we'd at least make the, the board aware of it as well. And other than that, one of the things I can say is last year, we had the discussion with the S A U staff about uh, implementation of statement eighty-four. And when we came in for the audit, um, we had asked about student activity funds. So real quick background with statement eighty-four, which was implemented two or three years ago. Um, before that, everything was just an asset and a liability. When GAFB came out with statement eighty-four, you now had to report on the ins and the outs. When we came up for the audit for twenty-two, there was no accounting for the ins and the outs that we could see within the district's records. Um, and the S A U staff actually was very receptive to it. And when we came up for the audit this year, they had already gone through, they had already made, um, the corrections to actually get all the inflows and the outflows to the student activity funds and reported them as such to us. So when we came out, we actually had records that mirrored the way that GAFB wants them presented in the financial statements. So extremely appreciative of that because we don't necessarily get that everywhere. And it does make our job easier once that's.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions? With the financial statements?
You said there was no material.
Uh, no, no material adjusting journal entries. We don't care about weaknesses in internal control, no significant efficiency in internal.
Keep going, keep going, nice and loud, nice and clear. Uh, it's very difficult to understand, but there's no problem. Sometimes in an audit, accounting on it, he's saying there's no problem. We're good.
Yeah, then we do.
I appreciate your breakdown of fund balance. That's always, you know, a piece of us and my burn with it. It's, it's, it's a challenge that we actually put in a contingency fund next year to help just in case, cause it's such a tight budget. So breaking up fund now, so continuing Mike and me, it's a good thing. I appreciate your work on it. It's very clear and it's comprehensive. So I appreciate the breakout of the fund now. But thank you.
One of the ways you can actually tell whether or not, if we had any, any significant journal entries too, is if you looked at the budget versus actual, which is a schedule one, R S I, uh, you'd end up seeing if we had material adjusting journal entries, the difference for the start of the year fund balance that would be used to reduce some battery, then the ultimate would, this year, a dollar. And more likely than not, that is probably some level of rounding with the way that it's reported to the New Hampshire D O E and the D O E twenty-five and the way that we got it into the financial.
That's everything, yeah, rounded down to one dollar, which is nothing is legit.
Yep.
No, I, thank you. I think it's great. Good, good work.
Appreciate it.
And then we, just earlier, right, the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'd love to, you know, be, be providing this to the board.
December, January.
January. Um, and I know you guys are, are swamped with.
I know, we, I think there was, yeah, I think there was some confusion too with what we were requesting related to the subscription-based information technology arrangements.
Okay.
And when we finally got the information, then had to, to specifically sort through. It was almost, it was almost as if we got an entire dump of, here's the technology.
Okay.
Costs. And then had to go back and forth to say, what is a long-term agreement where you're paying for something versus?
Yeah.
Right, versus something where, you know, you, you have something that may be a short-term.
Yeah.
Spit out, which is.
Yeah.
Like an Adobe or your Microsoft Office or, you know, it was something where there was a purchase of an app or an iPad.
Yeah.
That's not what GAFB intended with the subscription-based information technology.
Yeah, that's all right. No, that's helpful. I understand, yeah.
The good news is there's no new standards that we, other than potentially the compensated absences, which that's an easy thing, easy fix, um, so make sure that there, there's no new complex standards that are effective for the district for the next fiscal year. Eighty-seven was a year of war releases and then, um, ninety-six with subscription-based.
You do have actuarial this year.
I believe that Ray already reached out.
Yes, he did.
Let's get started. Yeah, she actually proposed a question to me as to why is it the beginning of the year versus the end?
Right, yeah.
So now that we know what they're looking for, it would, it would be easier to distract.
Yes. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, it can work. I know exactly. I know half off the top of my head, but, yeah.
Well, that's good until the end of June.
Well, but I will make sure it gets out of my head before the end of June, I promise.
We're doing a both end.
Oh, there's a broken mine, yes, transfer.
There's enough room here, so we have problems.
No, it's all here.
Like Brian.
Yeah, it's his game.
To know where those subs are and all that.
You got it.
But overall, you're, you, you feel we're, we're good.
Yes.
The lights are still on, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Great night.
Thank you, Matt.
Andy, thank you.
See you guys Tuesday.
It's really.
Stay down, friend.
It's a, uh, combined effort of a lot of people, you know, we have a huge, very, very, very strong business office team.
Thank you. A lot in there. I mean, I skimmed, super skimmed it. I was like.
Yeah.
Good.
Do you have any? That, counsel?
Not really. I mean, I mean, I work for in manufacturing, so I see some of that, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So our next item, uh, to discuss is policy, second reading of policy I J O C, which is regarding volunteers. Fortunately, I don't know the background of any of the adjustments that were made. Um, does anybody have any questions or comments regarding, uh, policy I J O C? Regarding volunteers.
Yeah, this is a, uh, policy is kind of kicked back down to the individual districts to align to, um, the other districts. And, uh, so that the intent of this is to, to get this board to approve this policy to align it with, with the other, with the S to the.
I say this is pretty much dictated by the state, which is kind of a state-driven.
Yeah, and this is R S A in state, but we did, there's some things that exceeded the minimum, which everybody thought were confident. Um, Sarah and Jess were implement, uh, intimately involved in this and really recommended for my burn.
Okay. Um, I'll take a motion to accept, um, policy I J O C, second read.
Do, do we have to do these individually? It's a consent, it's a consent agenda, right? We'll just go through everything and.
We, we can.
But does that matter?
Perfect, we can do it that way. Sure, if you want to, yeah, just do all five, yeah, yeah.
Just, I repeat the policy, we repeat the policies together, these are all second reads.
Okay.
Except for.
So I'll take a motion to accept, uh, consent agenda items one. Policy I G O C, agenda item two, which is policy J I C D A A slash G B E B B. Agenda item number three, revenue twenty-three, twenty-five. Number four, unanticipated revenue was five hundred dollars. And number five is the grant that it's, I'll take a motion to accept. Items one through five. I will trust.
I'll make that much.
I will second it. All those in favor? And I don't have a class six.
All right.
Six twenty-five, we're unscheduled, man. Um, principals report, Mr. Left Rider.
Good evening, everyone.
For yours.
All righty. I'll keep this brief, Mr. Chamberlain. Um.
Thank you.
I have, uh, just about turned the corner to the last lap of the year here, fourth curve. Uh, I'm gonna start with a little bit of, uh, the back, uh, the last few weeks, kind of what's been happening. Uh, I want to remind the board our three priorities, our three goals. Center on math, literacy and S E O. I'm gonna start with literacy. I want to talk a little bit about, uh, what we've been doing, uh, to prepare for Read Across M V week next week. That is, uh, one of the things, one of the goals within literacy is to celebrate literacy and to put it at the center of our K six, uh, platform model. So that it's not just a kindergarten or a sixth grade thing, but it's, it's all the way up through. Um, so Dr. Home, our, our reading specialist, along with, uh, Ms. Landworld, our curriculum coordinators, has been planning for an author visit on Monday. Uh, she'll be visiting, uh, each grade level. Uh, we're excited for that. That'll happen, uh, the first day of Read Across M V. And then, uh, the rest of the week, we're just kind of doing spirit days along the way related to literacy. And then Friday, we have some guest readers, including, uh, one Ms. Gotther behind me, uh, from A M S and a number of folks in this room who will be guest readers. So, uh, building up to that, Patty Garrity in the library is doing a lot of work with students just about literacy. Talking about reading, uh, plugging reading and that all sort of culminates. And if you've read the newsletters, the weekly newsletter's been highlighting students and their work, uh, around reading culminates in this week. So we're really excited about it. I'm, uh, excited to report next month how that goes. Uh, but we have a lot of fun plans. Another thing, it was Gary, um, Miss Holmberg for their work. We also, as part of that, on Monday evening, or having a family literacy night, the author is coming back uh, Monday evening and all families are invited to be part of that as well. So, uh, we're pretty excited about that. Uh, we're also planning in terms of literacy, our writing celebration for this spring. Uh, that will happen in May. And, uh, it's been fun to walk through rooms over the last few weeks and see students starting to work on their portfolios uh, for, for, not really just for the writing celebration, but that begins sort of that process of reflection around their progress. There's been growth this year and, uh, culminates in the writing celebration later in May. So, uh, more to come on that, but I'm excited about that. And, uh, there's a lot of good things happening in our building around literacy. I think I mentioned, we have almost every staff member involved in letters training, uh, as a very deep training on reading and, uh, the science of reading and implementing instructional strategies around reading. Um, so we've had a lot of good conversations, book studies and things on that. Um, and I'll continue to report out on, on what that looks like in our, in our classrooms, but we're very excited about that work. So you might know the Red Sox, uh, opened up their Fenway Park this week, uh, opening day. We did a celebration of baseball and, and that here, uh, Chief Slaven came over and he clocked, uh, throws of students throwing, uh, the ball to me. Actually, it was the catcher. I had a few errors out there. Think I pulled a hamstring while I was at it as well, but, uh, we, we, yeah, yeah. Uh, but we had a good time. Uh, Suzie, our kitchen manager, uh, or lead in there, uh, served some Falcon Franks and, uh, we had some good baseball music happening. Um, so it was a fun day, good spirit day, baseball spirit day on, uh, on, on Tuesday, actually.
Almost could have done snowballs.
What's that?
You almost could have done snowball.
I know, girl. You're like a week away from that. Uh, next week, we have our, uh, our third SOAR assembly of the year. And, uh, just to remind you, the SOAR assemblies are very intentional around our core values. The first assembly was around respect. The second one was around kindness, others first. And the next one is going to be about safety, always safe. Uh, we've invited our fire department in town to come over. So the first one was police came and then library and now fire, uh, for safety. So, uh, along with that, we do a lot of spirited activities, fun things. But, uh, the beginning of it is centered on our core values. The other thing I just wanted to mention quick was, um, some of the professional development work we did over the last month during our early release. Um, I had mentioned the, um, the representative for responsive classroom that came in and gave us some feedback on some of our instructional strategies around lively learning and engaging students. Um, a lot of times when you think about responsive classroom, you think around, um, just the building community piece, which is super important. But there's a very significant component of responsive classroom that is around engaging learners. And what, what are some of the instructional strategies that you're implementing to engage learners, no matter what the content? And so, um, we were able to access a platforms and it was asynchronous, bringing back an old COVID term here. We pivoted to asynchronous until the staff, haven't used those words in a while. Um, but we did some professional development on those responsive classroom. Um, but we did some professional development on those responsive classroom strategies that we talked about the month before. So that went really well. And uh I had some positive feedback of that. And then the last thing I want to talk about was just uh as we now enter the last lap of the year is the end of year planning that we're doing. And uh one big piece to that is transition to A M S. And uh I would thank. The A M S administration, the counselor, um and Anna Gerard, our counselor, who um is a workhorse here. Um, for the work that she's doing specifically with our sixth grade, the work that A M S is doing um with me and and Anna. Uh, to plan for next year for our sixth graders. So uh this last month, since our last meeting. We had some A M S students come back to M V. They live in M V and they spoke with our sixth graders. It was a great day, very positive. Uh, it's about forty-five minutes. They just, it was kind of a Q and A, pretty open. And uh very honest and and really you could see the the nerves come down through that forty-five minutes. So that was just very real, very authentic, and uh it it was it was a really good experience. So that's something we've done before, but really organized and well done this year. Uh, we also had A M S specials represented uh for presentation. They came in. And uh got the students very excited. One of the things about middle school life is um building deeper connections to your school. And not only around spirit and pride, but around trying things new. You know, that's what middle schools are all about, trying new things and getting connected. Having that positive connection to school. So um specialists came down, did a really nice presentation on that. Um, and there's more to come over the coming weeks and and couple of months. Uh, we are planning uh ecology school. Chris and I have been. Lot of contact about that uh with our with our staff. Uh, that is going to be the second full week of May for M V students. And that's a great way for our students to interact with A M S students. It's a great way for our students to just build some independence and uh learn some teamwork skills at that at that uh program along with old science stuff that they're doing. Uh, there's a lot of other components to that program that are very useful for that transition stuff. On the other end of the spectrum, we had our kindergarten information night, uh very well attended. We have thirty-one's, I think actually thirty-two. I have another one coming in uh along the way, but uh signed up for the fall. I expect that number to grow a little bit, actually, over the next uh few months. But uh very well attended, went really well, really positive, took the parents on a tour. Uh, at the end of the night and uh there were a couple, they gone through the school. You know, fill my age, some of the parents that went here and came through and now they've got kids coming in, so pretty, pretty cool. Um, so it's been a great month. Looking forward to uh the next two months. With the end of the year, come a lot of celebrations and and recognition, so looking looking forward to that.
Thank you. Any questions? You answered some of the notes I had made. Um. Thirty-two is that um in line with where we're at this year, Tom? Where, I don't know.
Um, I'm gonna say that's a, if I were to look back at where we were last year, this year, I think we're actually a little larger numbers this year.
This year?
This current year for next fall, for next fall, in terms of like where we are in in April, early, almost mid-April now. Um, compared to last year. I don't remember the exact number at this point. We were right around thirty. I would say twenty-nine, thirty.
Yeah.
So.
So we might be like.
Similar, similar. We could be up thirty-three, thirty-four. I wouldn't be surprised. There.
Um, we're anticipating both for next school year as well as the following year and Nesdeck is showing slightly higher kindergarten enrollments. It's that COVID baby. Boom, that happened. So um it it was expected.
COVID being blamed for.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I I still see um. New families moving into town. I I think there is still that cycle of life that's happening.
This building.
And build.
There was a building.
Yeah.
There's my little roof here. Yes, I love the Egyptian mass.
Yeah, those look great. Those are awesome. Yeah.
Those are very cool. Very, yeah.
Um, and you answered I a note about the A M S night, because I know there's always that concern of transition. I think, you know.
So so is next year, you said, is the kindergarten ball or the year after?
Um, both.
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 Yeah, starting next year and I'm just pulling up Nesdeck here.
And it'll persist for a while.
No, so I have, I'm looking at our fall projections. I don't have our um spring handy. I think Amy might. Uh, I haven't saved them to my guide yet. Do you want them? Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Um, but from the fall, our projections for next year for kindergarten were thirty-two. So we're, you know, right there, the following year thirty-two, and then the year after is looking at forty-three. Which is interesting um that it it jumps. Um, but again, we're looking, you know, pretty far. Again, a little far out.
So class, class grade is the big, is the humble. Potentially as much as sixty.
In sixth grade, no, on sixth grade. Which will be good for us. What year is that? Um, born in twenty-twenty-one. I don't know, so thirty-two, thirty-three, we're looking at sixty in sixth grade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine, forty-four.
Always on. Yeah, but yeah.
That's the.
Yeah.
Andrew, any further questions or comments for you select writer? Next, Tom. Great reading, as always.
Oh, great job. Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a guest from the middle school, Ms. Gothere.
Yes.
Give us an update on transition A M S.
Sure, I'll just go after this program, so I'm not hiding in the back. Awesome. Thanks for having me tonight. Appreciate it. Um, I think it's always a good opportunity for me to come and visit. Um, because um obviously we are linked. Um, I enjoy having uh the experience of working with students from Mount Vernon. Um, I think um I enjoy watching them come in in the fall and meld with our students over the course of the year. Um, it's definitely a fun phenomenon to watch the classes come together and work together. Uh, so I know Tom discussed a little bit about uh the things that have already happened. So we started this process in February. I believe you have my memo um that I included.
Yes, in fact.
With the packet tonight. Um, so that started with our upper school counselor, Chris Beatty, who has a therapy dog. He came to Mount Vernon uh village school. He came here to visit sixth grade students with Moose. Um, just to introduce themselves, to share some basic information about A M S uh and answer questions from students. So that was just a very quick meet and greet, like recognize our faces, how's it going? Um, just really, really uh surface level. Um, our inner scholastic um sports, our fifth and sixth grade students have been participating in our scholastic sports this year. Your your fifth and sixth grade students um have been joining ours, which has been really, really great. Um, they're able to do that. Um, they they're not, unfortunately, because of the the league rules, not allowed to compete in anything that has league standings, because we're not under the same roof. Um, which we've been, I know, fighting for quite some time. Um, so that's, that's a little bit of a struggle. But they've been able to compete in, you know, cross-country wrestling, cheer, track and field. And it's very convenient because they get off the bus at the A M S bus circle, walk over, hang out in the library and then come for practice. So it's a good system we have going on and I think it provides a nice early opportunity for those relationships and connections to start. Um, I heard kids be able to say like, oh, I already know you from track and field when they joined in seventh grade this year. Or I already know you from cross-country, or I already know you from ecology school. Um, so that's kind of a nice, nice connection. And then many um students also ended up doing some of the Amherst rec sports as well. So sometimes those connections are formed. Um, just naturally outside of of A M S. Uh, the scheduling process has started, so forms have been sent out for selecting um. The electives. So as as Mr. Leffler was talking about, we have an elective uh process, which is. Great in that students get to choose their electives in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, very, I think, innovative compared to many middle schools. Many middle schools don't have that option. You just take seventh grade art, we take eighth grade art. It's just given to you. Our students have the ability to choose, which which really does open up that opportunity for a little bit more of a personalized experience. And if you don't want to take certain things, you don't have to. And if you want to take more of something, you have the ability to do that. Yes.
Do you know the teachers that are going to be teaching those electives in advance?
Um, not always exactly. So generally by department, yes. So like I have two art teachers, so the art teachers will teach the art classes and the music teachers will teach the music classes.
The request from my students is to know which teachers are on which ones, so they can recommend them to their siblings.
Got it. Yeah, so I don't always know that, but um it it always depends on um. So one example I can give you for this is um we had a very large number of fifth grade band students come in. Uh, this year from Clark Wilkins. So because of that, I had only so many sections of seventh and eighth grade classes. That our band director, Kevin Swift, could teach. So that means some of the upper class. Um, upperclassmen electives went to Larry Ballard, who's my other music teacher. Whereas other years, if the chorus classes are bigger, then Kevin Swift takes over more of the seventh and eighth grade. So it's a balance depending on enrollment, depending on interest, depending on the type of courses um that we have. So it depends each year.
I will tell you this, that a long time ago, I had the ability to pick my classes in seventh middle school.
Yeah.
I did it alphabetically. And E was the last letter called, so I got next to nothing of what I wanted. I can still start from it.
Oh, I can tell. Yeah, so luckily, it's not um, it's it's not like a first come, first served. Everybody was put all of the choices in. Um, and we just push a button uh and it's random. So it's not, there's no like fight to get registered first or alphabetical order, luckily. So as people have been registering and putting in their choices, uh once we make sure everybody's choices are in, then we can push the magic power school button and make it do its magic.
We didn't have the.
No magic power school button. It's all index cards and pencils and all of that. Um, I'm very, very thankful for the magic power school button. I'll tell you that much. So we're working on that, on that whole piece and and part of that obviously was having uh the electives teachers come up here and present to students what all the options are. And I'm excited about that because I think about like, I would have loved to take ceramics in seventh and eighth grade, right? Like I would have loved to be able to take some of these. Um, we have design engineering, we have photography. Photography is a very popular plus, you know, that I couldn't take to high school. So to have the opportunity to do some of those things. Um, and focus on those in middle school is really cool. Um, and we have the resources to be able to do that, which I appreciate. So um that is, that's just kind of the scheduling journey that we're in right now. Social events, we've been able to invite students from Mount Vernon to social events this year, which has been nice. Uh, we uh have been making sure to plan ahead with that. If we're invited, if we're doing something that involves sixth grade students A M S. We give a shout out to Tom and say, hey, we have this going on. Let them know. We would love to have sixth graders here um at A M S with us. So we had a big Halloween glow dance and then we had a spring fling, uh which was organized by our National Junior Honor Society students, which was a. A dance, but it was like a daylight dance. So it was a little bit um tamer dance. Uh, for students uh a- after school one day. And that was nice because students could again take the bus over. So they took the bus over and we had a DJ and it was an hour and a half of music and friends and fun and snacks and and very developmentally appropriate for them. But it, that was a really nice opportunity. Um, and then you had discussed also the um students coming to to talk. Uh, to your students, a Mount Vernon residents that are currently in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, I believe they were eighth graders that came to talk.
Some of those. They were eighth graders.
Eighth graders, yeah.
They were eighth graders.
So uh that was actually, that suggestion was born out of the conversations that happened in the fall. So that was a student that two years ago, last year, she's a current eighth grader, uh had brought that up to Mr. Beatty and said. You know what would really help me? If people who had been through it came to us and told us about their experience. So I thought that was a great idea and that's something we're going to stick with. And that was just a product of of part of the transition process that we'd already been doing. So that was. They were they said.
Yeah, they just like.
Yeah. Um. So then um Read Across Mount Vernon Day next week. Um, I did that last year and uh. I love that. It was, that was great. I had the opportunity to meet students and read to them picture books, which is fun, not not often a part of my day. Uh, that I get the the privilege of of participating in. And I was able to also spend a little bit of time just at the very end, answering some questions about middle school, getting to know them, getting to know some names. Passing out A M S stickers uh and just getting them excited about the transition. So it's just a nice little fun. It's my opportunity to do a little bit of a meet and greet with them. Uh, and again, some of them I know already because I've seen them at the activities and sports and dances and those types of things as well. We have the college school coming up. That's always exciting. So you're paired with one of our teams that is going up. So they'll have an opportunity to get to know each other, um and even some of our teachers as well. So um those will be some some familiar faces that they'll see in the hall next year, like, oh, I remember that sixth grade teacher from a college school. Um, Connection Day is always, um, actually, I skipped over something. Um, M V V S to A M S Transition Night as well. So we have, um, last year was a little bit long. Um, so those those of you, I don't know if Andrew was there last year, were you here last year? Yeah, it's a little bit long. So it was an hour and a half. We we pared it down to an hour. We felt like that was a little bit better just for the size of the number of people coming. So um that was great. We have a panel of students that come and answer questions for parents and guardians and for students. So they came, we do an intro like all about A M S. Here are the familiar faces. Here are counselors. Here are our administrator, like administration. Uh, here's what the cafeteria looks like for those who haven't been there. Here's what the building looks like. We do tours. Um, and just kind of an intro to the place with parents and families. And that's um a really great night and that's coming up May first. And then um we also have our Connection Day where our sixth graders from Mount Vernon visit our sixth graders at A M S. And they get to spend a day paired with the sixth graders to be able to follow them around. Live their class schedule with them and just see what it's like, a day in the life of an Amherst Middle School student. So that's nice because it provides a nice social connection. It provides um a nice opportunity to understand the building. Again, see familiar faces in classes because some of the teachers are going to be the same. Those specials teachers are going to be the same. Um, the administration is going to be the same. You know, there's people in the building that even though they're going to be in seventh grade. You know, they're going to be the same people. So it's a nice opportunity to visit for the day and live like an A M S student all day. And then um Step Up Day, always the last day of school for us. And uh they're going to be able to have that opportunity to again come up with the rest of the seventh grade. Um, all of our sixth grade students will go up to the seventh grade teachers and the seventh grade teachers do a nice job of doing a presentation and saying, hey, check out our classrooms. Um, this is what you're going to learn in seventh grade. Here are the familiar faces in seventh grade. And so they get to do that all together as a big group. Another great opportunity. Another brand new thing we're doing, which I'm really super excited about because it was a hit last year with our fifth graders. Is uh we're calling it Seventh Grade Flight School. That's what we call it, we're the eagles, much like your falcons. Um, a lot of birds around here.
There are a lot of birds.
The owls, the falcons, the eagles flying all over the place. I don't know about the sabers, though.
No, but the falcon's the top of the food chain.
Okay. Well, there's supposed to be a dance off between a falcon and an owl.
Let's move on.
We'll host it.
We're on a timeline, I guess.
We'll host it. Um, so we are going to host Seventh Grade Flight School. So last year was the first year we did this for um Clark Wilkins. Uh, fourth and fifth graders because there is, I think, a little bit of a narrative, which um for any district. That middle school can be scary and overwhelming and intimidating. And I love middle school. That's why I've been there for an extra twenty years. Uh, and I don't want it to feel that way for people. So I want it to feel familiar and I want it to feel. Um, exciting and I want people to be um feel prepared. Um, at least, you know, there's always some some nervousness about a new school year, but we were able to do some good planning with teachers. And plan some team building activities, school spirited activities that revolved, you know, we kind of snuck in some stuff around there that's boring. You know, some boring stuff, tours and, you know, uh some scavenger hunts and those types of things so that we would. Get really familiar with the building and the people in it. Um, but the kids didn't really realize they were doing that uh throughout the day. Um, but it was also a social opportunity because they were meeting, uh when we did it with the fifth graders, they were meeting some upperclassmen, some. Some sixth and seventh and eighth graders who were our helpers and our mentors there. The staff was there. We had our fifth grade staff there. We had our school counselors there, administrators there. We're going to do the same thing this year for Mount Vernon students. So seventh grade staff members, I just asked today, they're already raising their hands to help out. Excited about it. So we'll do the very similar program on a bit of a smaller scale. Um, they leave there with a, I think maybe a better sense of what their schedule could look like. Of what, um, how to read a schedule, how to navigate the building. Um, they leave there with a piece of uh Amherst Middle School swag. They get a T-shirt. And uh they're ready to go for their first day. So we do that almost like a an orientation before uh they come to A M S. So I'm hoping that that gives them a little bit more confidence um before their first day of school. It was really great. We had, to be honest, we had um, I think a hundred and sixty fifth graders last year. And we had over a hundred, I think a hundred and ten or a hundred and fifteen participants. So it's a huge turnout reward. So we're looking, I think you have thirty-eight sixth graders this year. Um, so I'm hoping that uh as many, we can get as many as possible. Um, I know it's tough with vacation sometimes, but. We're going to really encourage that and um invite them to come free of charge. Uh, but it's a really good experience and a good opportunity for us to be able to meet them and for them to get familiar with us in the building. Um, and then we're going to continue our, um, as always, as we kind of trickle into the next school year, we're going to continue those family student check-ins. So as you know, as part of the tuition agreement, we do the the school counselor. So as you know, as part of the tuition agreement, we do the, the school counselor Chris BD does a student meeting with every student, the first, with every Mount Vernon student, the first month of school. Um, to just check in to see how it's going. He kind of does a general check in. How's it going? Um, what do you like about Amherst Middle School? What, what's difficult about Amherst Middle School? What can we do better? What can we do to support you? Um, and he records that feedback. So we use that feedback in our planning process. Um, it's also a good way that we can get to know students a little bit better and talk to the interdisciplinary team about ways that we can support those individual students. So it's super helpful. Um, we took it one step further the year I came in and I asked Chris to call every single parent after you had those meetings. So that way it's an opportunity to be able to say, hey, I sat down with your student. Here's what your student said. How are you feeling about things? So it makes that instant connection. So this is the second year we did that and we plan to continue that as well. Um, I think that's good to be able to have that family, student, school connection. So that has been going well. Um, and we plan to continue to, you know, do these things and uh build upon them and um, make sure that we are providing a welcoming environment for students from Mount Vernon.
You have a, you may have said it, but do you have a parent student visit night at the school?
Yep, that's the May first night.
Okay.
Yep.
And that.
Uh, everybody in last year was there.
Yeah.
All my kids' friends, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty well attended.
You do a great job too. It's a great job, Tom. I really appreciate you doing it. It's really good.
That's great, a great update. Now, I have a question on the sports thing, cause I mean, the hockey teams are, are made up across the state with multiple districts and they're, they're in.
Middle school. It's called Tri County Middle School. It's Tri Counties.
A different governing body.
They're JB, NHIA. They're a little crazy pants.
Yeah.
It, it is. So it's a war.
Yeah.
You run into a wall on that. And it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't.
I actually sat next to when I, so I was the athletic director in the middle school in Bedford a few years ago. And I sat next to Jeff Wayne, who was the AG at Amherst Middle School, when he proposed the vote to try to include Mount Vernon. Um, and it was amazing. The vote was like only two people voted yes and everybody else voted no. And I couldn't understand. I like could not understand why it was such a problem. Uh, and I still really can't and, and um, you know, there are people out there that say, well, if they did that, they would try to pull a bunch of, you know, they would try to pull fifth graders from all the elementary schools in Nashua or Manchester. And they try to like recruit all the best kids from all the elementary schools and then there would not be a line of who you could recruit and pull up and who you couldn't. So they, the rule is under the same roof. That's how they, that's the line.
It used to be much more. I'm old, like thirty years ago, Tri County was this casual, just helpful scheduling thing. Now it's this militant organization with rules and preventing middle schoolers from playing.
And, and the thing is with Tri County, there's different levels within Tri County.
Yeah.
But you can, you can still weed it out so that it all makes sense within that.
The nice thing, so they do get to, I mean, they do get to participate. So for instance, like, like the, the meets, the cross-country meets, the wrestling meets, the, the spirit meets, the um track and field meets. None of those are ranked. It's only the things that are ranked. So the things that have like seeds and like, like softball and baseball and soccer and field hockey and there is a missing out point. To be honest though, many fifth and sixth graders aren't really on those teams. It's, it's mostly seventh and eighth graders anyway.
Yeah.
So for the most part, the majority of the population of our fifth and sixth graders are on those other teams that Mount Vernon students are joining. So it's not a huge discrepancy at this point.
Yeah. Good to know. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Cool. Thank you for coming up.
Have a nice.
My business.
You are just. Unless you wanna get my children.
No, I'm gonna take it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Have a great night.
Next up on our agenda is a discussion on our proposed twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. Four-year school year.
Is this the end date now that we're.
Yes.
Yeah, we had.
No more, hopefully no more snow days.
It's gotta be.
So. Steve's been kind of working with the calendar out. I'll uh kind of turn over him, but essentially, um, it looks like we're gonna have to make up one day.
So just to talk about the journey uh that we've been on with the calendar, um, last year when I was interim soup, we had lots of discussions about the article in the contract, we're making up snow days. Um, I didn't follow the public notice process that Adam did the year before. We felt that the end of the year was just too late to have families change the snow days. And part of that adjustment that we did is that we'd say, we, we notified people early. So in August, if you remember, the board took a vote to um notify everyone that we would plan on making up snow days. Um, and there is some, there's some question about some past practice and contract language that we are working through the collective bargaining process very appropriately and religiously and partnering with MBEA to uh jointly to get a clarification of contract language that is still in process. So the, the, oh, the board's ability to make up the, the five snow days is, is being go through a, the process articulated in the agreement. Um, but we had um our fifth snow day and we had one um school equipment, right? That was the. But and then I, I paid more attention, um, been more involved in, in just the, the contract in it. So the contract provides a mechanism for the board to waive up to five. You have that mechanism. And how the first five, how we do, we'll get a clarification on language. Um, but it doesn't have a mechanism to waive the six. Um, so the, right now, the tradition, the projected end is that Wednesday, the twelfth, the sixth day would move it to the thirteenth and still TBD to determine about language and the board's discretion about the five. So if we could at least um notify folks that because we've had a sixth, that uh it would be no earlier than the thirteenth. If the board would make that and still be determined whether or not we extend it beyond the thirteenth, depend on the, on the clarification contract language. That would be great for me. Um, and that's, that's what Mike and I have talked about, that for sure. Um, the board has, that actually in the contract, there's no mechanism. So we would make up the six, we have had six cancellation days. That's how they're angry. And so the first five will may waive and that's what we're getting clarification on. But there's no opportunity to waive the sixth. So if we could move the last day of school to the thirteenth at this point, I think that would be helpful.
Could we move it to the, well, because it's all communication, right? So. I don't know. It might be disruptive to communicate it now. Let's say the thirteenth, because then everybody will lock in the thirteenth and they'll start making plans.
We could message this saying right now, we know we're moving at least one day and we're, we'll determine whether the board will determine whether or not the original five snow days, once they hear clarification in the process. We can communicate that. We can certainly joint message this. We're not trying to be adversarial with MBEA. We can talk to Charlie and Mackie and just say how this is coming. So I, you know, Christine and I talk about this a lot, even the arbitrary, that's, it's not personal, right? It's just clarification language. Bad thing. It's actually a good thing. We're gonna be better for this after this process.
We're gonna have one more meeting after this to declare the last, the last day of school is too, right? There'll be. Maybe the main meeting, we have to decide on the last day of school no matter what, because after that is too late.
Yeah, we, we probably would hear by then.
We know.
Guaranteed.
No guarantee.
But for tonight, um, at least we can expect family to at least make up that sixth, that sixth day and move it one day. Does that work?
I, I think it would be helpful for families. We could frame it a certain way that it's really clear that, you know, because of this, we, we know we'll be going to the thirteenth. However, if we hear back on the previous five, it could be subject to change. Well, subject to board discretion.
Or discretion.
Yeah, right.
So.
I guess that's a, that's a decent piece of communication. Just uh, hey, everybody, we had six, we had six days this year, so it's gonna be at least the thirteenth before they get back to us on, when's our next meeting? Mike?
May, I don't know.
We could just promise to get back to them on May tenth or something.
Yeah.
If that's the.
And if we don't know, then you probably might admit it's a.
And it's not happening. We don't have an answer from that.
We can schedule a special.
May ninth is it is.
Okay, yeah. So you could just say, we had six, so it's gonna be at least right, thirteen, thirteen, the board will, will, will update everyone on May tenth. Does that seem reasonable?
May ninth.
Yeah, absolutely. And do we need to vote on that?
Sure, but if it's that, that motion, that's.
Do you wanna do a motion to?
So I, yeah, I motion to inform all uh, parents that there have been six snow days, six days off and that the board uh, will need this extensive to at least the thirteenth and will update everyone on the, on May tenth, actually, immediately.
Perfect. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Awesome.
Thursday to thirteen.
Mercy bookups. We will talk with.
Um, our next item for discussion is uh with Ms. Facey to discuss unassigned fund balance projection.
Yeah.
And potential project discussion.
Yeah. So you have in your packet, um, our projections so far. Um, it's still quite early to, to really get a true read on where we'll end up um, as far as additional revenues and expenditure savings. So this is, this is, I would say probably the most conservative um projections that we have right now. It includes all funds that were encumbered at the beginning of the year and there are potential um savings. But as of right now, we're showing that uh, we will be able to fund the warrant articles, but we haven't reached the full amount of fund balance to be able to offset the tax rate that was projected. So we'll keep sending these um to the board for the next few months and see where we're at. So at this point, we're not projecting any money available for any of your projects, but we did wanna just um present those to you uh to get feedback and to see if there were other items that um the board may wanna consider. So, yes, I saw, Tom, that you did add some things. One of them is already covered um in the safe grant.
Well, we're in a lot of time here.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so just to go over the um, the year end projections for revenue, we're projecting some additional um interest income. Um, that's the local revenue. That, that local revenue amount is, is mostly made up of uh the tax effort. Um, but some other additional uh funding sources that come in, including interest income. For state revenue, that's mostly the adequacy aid and sweat um and special education aid. We were pretty much right on the money um in projecting what we were gonna get. So we're only showing about three hundred dollars more in special ed. Um, the federal is um, is mostly for Medicaid reimbursement. And that comes in very sporadically, not, not regularly. We have an outside firm that does our filing for us. But when we, it's difficult to predict when you actually receive those monies. So right now, we're uh, we've collected about fifteen hundred dollars more than what we projected. So not a whole lot of extra revenue at this point, but we'll have better numbers next month. Uh, on the expenditure side, we have some uh projected savings in um, tuition, but there's, was additional health insurance overages. Those are tough also to predict because we budget and then healthcare elections are made after the budget, so they're made in May. So those are always, um, we do our best to uh, based on historical elections. That's how we budget those. For special education, um, there was actually health insurance savings in that line, but we have some out of district costs that um are putting us over. Um, for student support services, we had some savings in the nurse salary benefits line um from a change in staffing. Uh, in instructional support services, we anticipate some savings in professional development. Uh, we are contractually obligated to budget for that, but it typically is not completely used. So that's, that's a common line to have funding leftover. Uh, the other, we're, we're being conservative. We're just projecting zero um, in funds. The transportation line, I expect that to change. Uh, the special ed transportation was fully encumbered at the beginning of the year. But we, when I'm looking at uh what we've spent year to date, I expect this line to go up because we did not need to use all of the funds that were budgeted. Um, there were some student elections made or some, some changes in transportation needs um, for some students. So, so we'll be realizing some, some additional savings.
You say go up to the good.
Up to the good. Yes, yeah. So I do expect that. Um, food service, we have gone over that a bit. Um, we are expecting to need a transfer um, from the general fund to the food service fund. So we're, we're still being conservative with that at this point and Crystal's working to try to mitigate that as best as possible.
I had a question on my notes.
Yeah.
Has there been any feedback on the face increase of the, of the meals? So.
We haven't seen anything. Have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Okay.
And no significant decrease in participation.
No, and well.
I haven't heard anything.
Fifteen cents, right?
Yeah.
I know, I know she had a, I don't, it wasn't the record for the year, but it was close. Though there was the opening day. So hey, we start plugging things a little more and maybe that's the, something we can talk about, you know? But yeah, and she had a good day the other day with pizza. So there, there have been some, I, I don't think that the price has been a, I've heard it.
So I've been, uh, originally when I talked to her, no one.
Zero drop in. Zero comment, no one. No, no agita, no frankness and no, it, it was, we couldn't, there was no comment and everything looked very simply. You know, you can't really tell the day today. There was no comment, no.
And we're hoping for more improvements for next year. Um, as Crystal implements, likely implements a cycle menu where um it's every six weeks, we have the, a similar menus um, to, uh, it, it helps with planning. It helps with um less better planning for buying for food and able to um, to decrease some expenditures. So, so that's a plan for next year.
What's just, now, just kind of.
Yeah, I mean.
More weekly.
Yeah, it's more weekly. So if we do it on a schedule, then you know, she can buy things economy of scale and then um, and she's done some work with looking at other districts and they've been able to realize savings by doing that, so.
Jibouje.
Yeah.
Crystal's real good at this stuff.
Yeah, so, so that will help, help her next year. And she's doing everything she can to, to try to mitigate losses for this year. And um, we've talked about this supply chain grant funds that we're using. Um, everything available to offset food costs in the milk and uh produce. So, so that's where we are now. We'll bring um updated projections for May and then for June as well. We'll have, you know, it's pretty good numbers in June. And if there are funds available, then um the board may wanna consider uh, some of the projects. So I know at the time of printing, there were only two items that were put in. Um, it was for the replacement of the five, five ton compressor for the classrooms. I think, remember that was in the budget and we removed it and that was for seven thousand dollars. And then also the uh um, drill second well casing and pump testing, which was part of the phase one water system upgrade and not the larger amount of thirty-five thousand. Um.
I appreciate you linking the boat.
Yeah, yeah, that's from Roger. So, and it looks like there may be some other, I, I don't have numbers on these, but uh some late ads that the board doesn't see um, is uh ramp for the playground. Tom, you added that?
Yeah, well, I put that in there, I know, I know we've talked about that, and I know he put it out to bid, and we had one, but I remember there was one bid that came back. So to get here, remember during the budget process, we said a hundred forty-five thousand to reduce taxes, ninety thousand for. Our reserve funds, yeah, so to get to here, in my world, we have to have two hundred forty, two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And we're not there.
We're not.
And we probably expect not to be there, probably, we're gonna be okay, I think we're gonna cover the.
Well, we definitely cover the warrant articles. We have actually a little more than what you guys have, because it changes all the time, so.
We'll, we'll keep.
Yeah.
But the notion to get to that list is two thirty-five.
Yeah, it's unlikely.
That's, that's a bridge a little too far.
Yeah.
But you never know, but there's not a lot in the couch cushions at Montburn.
No.
So I had one other question was, I see that we replaced the uh water heater. How much and where did that come from?
That was like sixty-five hundred, I think, um, and Roger was able to cover that within his budget. So he had. Yeah, no, that's okay, um, so he looked at different lines, I think it was most, I have to look, but it was probably. I'm guessing some HVAC and some preventive maintenance contracts, so.
The um estimate. Doesn't necessarily match up to the total for the well there.
Oh.
It's, is that because we, we guess that we'll have to drill deeper than, than uh the estimate or something? It's broken up rather detailed.
Yeah.
There's a dust section that's fourteen thousand, there's a. If we had to drill you a new well, it's twelve thou, you know, just under twelve thousand.
Yeah, I would, I'd have to talk to Roger, but I would say. He likely went through and um. And did some of the calculations, but I can dig into that a little bit and get back to you. I don't think we're gonna end up doing it, but I'm happy to.
I know, I, it was just confusing to me, because I also got a quote from the exact same company. All the same, up close to the same amount that's listed in the actual quote.
Yeah.
But then putting it on the discussion process to, to discuss that at a much higher number. He must know something that we, we don't know from that quote.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I can, I can get some more information for you.
It's just, well, I mean, we might, if it was only. Twenty-four thousand, because you're gonna do a test, you're gonna do a drill, then we're gonna, it's, it's a different decision for us than thirty-five, but if you're saying that there, we're not gonna have money.
Likely not.
To get there anyways.
But I'm happy to, to look into that.
Yes, I mean. Uh, what's uh the, what's the five ton compressor, what is that?
So.
Do you know?
Kinda.
Is it heating and air conditioning, or is it, that was A C, wasn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
It would be great, I, I know, I mean, that was put in the budget, so it would be great if. We were able to do that, but we'll have to see.
Right, you know, just a, you know, a question like the. Which one is, is going to be better for the comfort of the kids?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, and we can, if we start to look like you're gonna have clothes, we can get some more information, and if, if these are gonna actually be real, I know.
Well, we.
We, so these are things we can avoid doing for a while, not an issue.
We'll have to, yeah.
We have the maintenance, and we had a contingency fund, so we're in better financial position to handle the unknown.
Oh, right, we, we do have the maintenance contingency fund, we just usually wanna. Plan that out a little bit better.
We, we like to, if there's anything left over, conquering this stuff is great. Um, but it's not, it, it was a tough budget year, we had some anomalies, and anomalies, but we're in good shape. And, and we'll cover it, it'd be great, we can make sure we cover the warrant articles.
Yeah.
Make our headway towards the one forty-five, but I think we're, from where we were talking a couple of months ago. Regarding some, you know, some student stuff and some other stuff, we're really good shape.
Yeah.
Last year, do you recall? The projected budget, the balance was, did we get more than we thought last year, I thought I remember.
Well, we, we were slightly under what we projected for um tax impact. We did make up for it from the Sohegan, from the Montburn portion of Sohegan, so the Montburn residents actually did much better. On their tax bill than what we projected between the Sohegan, Montburn and, and the. That's great news, we always like that, like it when you, the taxpayers pay less than what we estimate they're gonna pay. Um, but, yeah, we were, we were, at this point in time, we, this is usually our worst projection, and then it. Tends to get better towards the end of the year, so. We, we, what we don't like to do in the business office is project more and then have to dial it back. We would rather go in the other direction.
Problem is, you, you, you overbudget or overproject, and then the people start spending money.
I know.
And then when you say, no, we don't have it, they're like, yeah, what do you mean, we don't have, you said.
I, I always feel like I'm threading a needle, but.
It's just as bad in the business world than it is for you, so.
Yeah, I know.
I'll become.
Comment number two, anybody there?
We do, we have, we have someone online, sir, but there's no hand up, but I did put in the comment section the little rules, so.
Okay. I saw a note, and you heard a note, Michael, about the testing that we had talked about, and apparently you guys did a. Deeper dive. I read it, but I was, I won't say confused, but I still.
So we made kid by kid, Christine and I, the specialists, youngsters, and what dropped the percentages of proficient or above. With a significant number of youngsters who were proficient or above in the past popped out. So.
So it skewed the results.
It did, so it was based on the biggest, if we look, we went through every single child who was proficient, it dropped, or one person went up. And it was very, very, almost identical to the year before. Except for the number of youngsters that uh dropped out, so if they had taken the test and performed as they went on before. The percentage of proficient or above would have been as expected.
There were very small number of actual shifts in performance from one year to the next, comparing student to student. Was very interesting.
There's a very small cohort, so in small cohorts, you have to be very careful about making sweeping conclusions. Because of cohort variability, this year, the cohort variability was like seven students opted out, which is.
Yeah, that's cute.
Almost twenty, it's about twenty percent of the entire test case, and it turned out that of those seven kids, the vast majority were proficient.
You think that's why they, they opted out, is because they don't, they, they don't see need to do testing? Does that make sense, or the parents don't see?
There are such various reasons for opting out, and we tend to get higher numbers of opt outs in the middle school, because. The students start asking their parents to opt them out, um, so it becomes. Uh, and then it snowballs a little bit too, in, in middle school, so it is a challenge with the number of opt outs we have, and we do. Um, we struggle too, because we're required to have ninety-five percent participation. The second we're below ninety-five percent participation, when they look at. Um, for accountability, not what's reported, but when they look at determining, um, whether we're the school in need of improvement or not. Um, anything more than that five percent, those student scores become zero when you look at accountability. So it can impact whether or not A M S is considered a school in need of improvement. Um, with there's, there's various ways that that's determined for accountability, so it puts us in a difficult position.
So do you need ninety-five percent total A M S or ninety-five percent of upward?
We disaggregated it for interest, but the state doesn't disaggregate, the state looks at the school.
So what happens if you're ninety-three percent?
We were ninety-four last year, so.
Do you recruit to get people to take the test, or you just gotta live with what you get?
Yeah, because state law allows families to opt out, so we can't do much except encourage families to consider having their student test.
We've done that, Kristen has done that, um, she's gone class to class, and we've, we've done some messaging to parents. Mike has done a really good job emphasizing the importance of how we're using it, and, and how the community is using it to. Not teach the test and not diagnose, but give it the appropriate time and respect, because there's certain factors in our community. Who are gauging our effectiveness.
Your report card.
Right, and we are, and we just need good data, we, which, we're not.
The Niva or the other one?
No, New Hampshire's that.
People using Niva too.
I did ask for more information on one of the two tests, to see if it was untimed at A M S or timed, did you get, find out that information?
Yes. Um, our, our, our intended operation is to untime, kids get the time that they need.
Yeah.
Can't say that every staff member implemented that at design, but our intent and our instructions are to not have time to event.
Well, we missed an opportunity with uh. Kristen in, here just a minute ago.
Never forgotten. But we did talk about it, we actually, that's, well, we're going kid by kid. Uh, one of the youngsters had reached out to Charlene to request some support, and so we went backwards, and we looked up and talked to everybody, kind of case studied it. And walked all the way through to make sure, and, um, I think we're doing, you know, there's always. Anomalies, but I think overall, we're, we're in a good place, and I really appreciate what Mike's done, not quite a fire, just be respectful to this process, it doesn't matter.
So we, we need to look in ten months when the next round of tests come back, but that's, that will be the latest.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be better to get ahead of it, send a message to. To say, please don't opt out, or, I don't know, because that then tells them that there's a possibility they can opt out.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's different ways to frame that message, you know, with that Andrew, and, and uh. That is definitely part of the, the kind of the conversation that we'll have as we interact with uh the data. Um. In the summer, we will have a more comprehensive um data presentation, you know, for the board. You know, as, as these kids come through. And culminate their experience at. Uh, the village school, and, you know, we'll be able to kind of get in a little bit, you know, deeper about uh M B student and A M S. You know, there, but what we did is, we did wanna respond to your inquiries. And the good thing about data, and I'm just gonna keep saying this, we're not gonna overreact about it, we're gonna kind of look into it, we're in even keel, it tells us a story. And what we wanna do is just for, you know, make sure that we are um. Doing what we think. Is best for our students, and we want them to, to learn and acquire content knowledge and skills. Want them to take certain, you know, tests seriously when it's time and it's appropriate, but uh. You know, at the same time, we wanna be really reasonable, like how we use, you know, data for growth and, and, and internal reasons. And, and how we use data for, you know, effectiveness, internal effectiveness. And then, you know, we also wanna factor in, it's New Hampshire, you do have the ability to opt out, right? And um, it's a, it's a, it's something that we navigate, and so because of all those factors, we just try to remain even with it. And look at it and, and be honest about where we are, and you guys will always get the honest, you know, data, and get the honest story. And we'll answer any questions with it.
And honestly, we get the difference seven had opted out, it could have been the other, it could have swung the other way.
Yeah. Um, just one thing I wanna talk about while we're in general updates, the start and end times conversation is happening on April thirtieth. At the S A U meeting, uh, there's been some surveys deployed, you see the information there, but however, if this board has any questions. That they want answered, now please email me, or constituents from the town have any questions, remind them to email me. And then we'll make sure we get everything in there, and we're just going through the process to make, to provide the boards with all the information they can, so they can have a meaningful. Conversation about starting end times, uh, this was board driven by members of, of boards throughout S A U thirty-nine, so that's why we're having it. Um, I will tell you on the letter note, you know, it says advertised, it is part of the topic throughout. As anything, and, and me, we're, we're here, we're just providing all the information, it's the board decision.
The sixth grade students gathered together and asked my daughter to have me log in for taking their decisions. It is, it is highly contested within the students.
So.
I, I suggested to my daughter that she show up during the public comment period, and she got it.
So we'll get more to come on.
The sheep, I may have curious.
Sixth grader.
Yeah, but.
She, the, her cost makes more at the times left as a.
Left as is.
Yeah. Would surprise me, but.
All right, we're ready for public comment.
No hand raised, my friend.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Uh, make said motion.
Second. All in favor, meeting adjourned.
We'll do a quick non-meeting.
Yeah, we're telling meeting.